Oh, you met my wife.
Yeah.
That was very nice.
Your little kid is really cute.
That was awesome.
It's late, let's do it.
Welcome, everybody, to the September 12th Wacom County Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The clerk, please, call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Sat Paul Sodou?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
And Carl Weimer is excused this evening.
That is cheating.
Could you please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of announcements. If you have your cellphone with you tonight, please either turn it off or put it on vibrate. And if you will be handing out any paperwork up here to council members, please include our staff over here on the side for their records. We're going to head right into our public hearing.
Hearings.
Hearings. The members of the public who signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of the meeting will be called first and asked to form a line on either side behind the signs. If you're unable to sign up before the meeting, that's okay. You'll be given an opportunity to address the council once we've gotten through the lists. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and will be given three minutes to speak. Council staff will keep track of your time, and they'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left, and then they will let you know when your time is up. So with that, our first public hearing is an ordinance amending Wacom County Code 8.13 Solid Waste Disposal District regarding the solid waste excise privilege tax. And do we have any staff report, Jeff, at all? Come on forward.
Thank you, Jeff Hagedes, supervisor, Wacom County Health Department. So...
It's not...I don't know if your mic's on.
Yeah, you gotta talk right...
Yeah, you do have to talk right in it, like that.
Barbara, thank you. Can you hear me? Very good. Thank you, council members. Okay, so in the approved 2016 Comprehensive Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan, we have recommendation 91F that says that a review shall be conducted of the funding mechanism for solid waste services and programs. And these services and programs that we're talking about are things like the disposal of toxics program, our three-waste reduction in recycling, community education outreach programs, you know, for youth, adults, and commercial target populations. It's everything from comprehensive planning to adopt a road to legal dump complaint investigation and those types of things. And we've been conducting that review, and we've been working with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which is comprised of industry representatives and citizens, and the Solid Waste Executive Committee, which is comprised of the mayors and the executive. And just for a little short background, prior to 1997, the solid waste services and programs were funded by a surcharge by the ton collected at the transfer stations. And that was a $9 per ton charge collected on all tonnage crossing the scale. However, at that time, in '97, as a result of the solid waste legal arbitration, you know, the settlement agreement in the lawsuit with RDS, the judge deemed the surcharge to be illegal. And up until, you know, the surcharge is a type of pass-through fee, and up until then, that's what we relied upon to pay for the services and programs because we are a privatized solid waste disposal district. We don't have a transfer station where we can charge a tipping fee, and then attach to that tipping fee, you know, costs to fund programs. For example, you know, in King County, they put a $5 add-on to their tipping fee just for their disposal of toxics program. So at that time, then, the decision was made that we would fund these services and programs through a solid waste excise privilege tax. And that's a state provision. And in Wacom County Code 8.13, Solid Waste Disposal District, there is that provision, section 030, where we levy an excise tax. And the way that that works, quite simply, is that there is an $8.50 per ton excise tax for all tonnage collected curbside, right, or at a business commercial dumpster by a certificated or franchised hauler. And in our county, right now, we have, you know, three of those: sanitary services company, Nook's Act Valley Disposal, and Can Do. And certificated is when the hauler is actually regulated by the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, and they get a territory, and, you know, their rates are every...and their services are highly regulated. Franchised is like we have in Bellingham, where the city actually has a contract with the hauler. So very, very similar. And so that really was how, for a number of years, we funded our solid waste system. And the other way that our solid waste system is funded is by state grants, in particular the Coordinated Prevention Grant. And that grant funds 75% of our disposal of toxics program, which is our highest ticket item, and things like illegal dumping and the Adopt-A-Road program. Illegal dumping, we respond to about 300 complaints every year. And this is everything from people not managing their garbage and attracting rats next door to hoarding behavior, or people just dropping off garbage in the middle of the night on the road. So it's quite a wide variety and a challenging thing to keep up with, but what we do, and it is, has been funded. So the excise tax and the state grants are how we have funded our system. So what is noteworthy about that regarding the excise tax first is that originally, when we formed our disposal district, of which council is the governing authority, and we have interlocal agreements with all of the cities where we co-manage our solid waste system, originally, we made curbside collection services mandatory. This was back in the early '90s, actually, mid-'90s. And the idea there was that everybody would equitably share in the cost of these programs and services by paying a tax on their collection services. And when that came out, there was a provision in that ordinance for, and there still is, to apply for an exemption so that you could self-haul if you did not want to have mandatory curbside services. So we kind of made it the law that you had to have it, but then we said if you filled out a form, you didn't have to have it. And to make a long story short, what's happened between then and now is that the industry's quite developed, things have changed, we found out that enforcement was very hard for mandatory services, and now it's kind of considered almost a right to self-haul instead of have curbside services, even though that's still on the book. That's one of the things, as per the comprehensive plan, that we're in review of. But how that affects our funding for programs and services is that currently, you know, we went from $9 a ton for all the tons in the county funding services 20 years ago to, right now, only 65% of our tonnage having an $8.50 excise tax levied on it. So that's 35% of our total tons that are not contributing a single penny to these services and programs. So what happened in that 20-year time period is that, you know, as, over time, more and more people filled out exemptions or then didn't fill out exemptions and opted out of the mandatory curbside, and we considered it more of a right, the state filled that gap with increasing dollars in the form of grants. And so we were able to, you know, continue to grow and fund these new waste reduction in recycling programs and the DOT, disposal of toxics program, et cetera. But then, the newest development is that we're now having a reduction in the funding from the state for these programs. And it's...the grant programs are two years, and they start mid-year. And so we had 2013 to '15, '15 to '17, '17 to '19. And mid-year this year, we were looking...we were seeing a $230,000 annual reduction in funding from the state for these programs. That has been exacerbated this year because in June, we did not get new contracts because of the state capital budget not being signed, tied in with Hertz's decision at all. So the reduction is more than we estimated mid-year because we have no funding for the second half of this year. And, for example, disposal of toxics program is just over $400,000 a year to manage and keep going. You know, we consider that a critical infrastructure service, actually. So that's why it's in the comprehensive plan to review the funding mechanism. And we worked with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee first, and then we went before the Solid Waste Executive Committee on this. And our recommendation to fill the gap from reduction in the state funding and to be equitable with, you know, how people pay for these services that they enjoy is to, as San Juan County did five years ago, simply, you know, not raise a tax, but simply levy that tax against that other 35% of the tonnage that, right now, you know, are basically self-hauling and not having that, any contribution to any of these programs. In the last Solid Waste Executive Committee meeting we had a couple of months ago with the mayors and the executive, we visited with them the concept of mandatory versus the right to self-haul. And the consensus was fairly clear that currently, there is a right to self-haul, and we should look at the provision for mandatory because there's all sorts of recycling services available now. But it was not seen as equitable or fair that people who are allowed to self-haul don't pay that excise tax. So when we look at the tonnages, what we're finding is that there's another 50,000 tons out there that is not paying any form of tax into these programs, that if we did levy that $8.50 per ton tax, we could pick up just over $400,000 per year. So in the actual ordinance, Wacom County Code 8.13, it was actually very simple to add transfer stations to the entities that collect the $8.50. So what happens right now, the haulers, on a quarterly basis, simply fill out a one-page form reporting all of the tonnage that they collected from, you know, in their territories, the people that have curbside services or the businesses that have dumpsters. And then there's some exempted entities, like Dropbox facilities, or government, or tribal operations, and they subtract that out, they provide some back-out, backup data, and then they submit a check payment to the treasurer, and then that funds our services. So it'd be exactly the same procedure to implement with the transfer stations. And then I guess the final thing I would end with that on is that in Wacom County Code 8.13, there is a requirement that annually, the Solid Waste Executive Committee will review the adequacy of funding mechanisms and report their findings to council. So what we're currently proposing is, for this first year, is to keep it at $8.50 and levy it against that other 35% of the tonnage. And then, at this time next year, see if our estimates on tonnage were correct, see what happens with the state capital budget, and also make up that money right now that we're not getting in state grants because they haven't signed the capital budget, just so we don't have to tap into the solid waste enterprise fund too awful much. So we are watching other jurisdictions statewide wrestle with the lack of grant funding, and we've seen it come for about a year. And we were prepared with what we feel is a good solution, and we're watching other jurisdictions grapple with it. So that is our recommendation tonight.
Mr. Donovan?
I've got a bunch of questions to probably use during the committee.
Is he getting into the microphone?
Oh, nice.
It was close? I have a bunch of questions, and a lot of stuff is due in a committee meeting. So first is, if we do get a cap...are we talking about a one-year thing if there's a capital budget, which eventually they're gonna have to pass a capital budget? Or is this a, you know, the deficit is a structural thing that is above and beyond what's going on with the fact that we don't have a capital budget? That's part of it. And I actually want to stress, I mean, the disposable toxics program, I think, is critical, and I want to make sure we keep this thing funded, but...
I can't answer that first question.
You can.
I can, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
In the current budget, there was a 33% reduction in Coordinated Prevention Grant dollars from $15 million to $10 million. And so that is what is largely factored in to our estimate of a reduction of $230,000.
So that money's gone.
And so, you know, we do expect, though, that the state capital budget will get signed, you know, maybe at the end of the year, maybe soon thereafter, at that level. However, if we just went six months with no funding, you know, that's, you know, significant dollars over the 230 that we were already estimating, which is why we'd like to go one year, just so we're not...we're covering those losses.
Okay, my other question is that, I had my notes from, like, reading the packet, that due to subsequent increase over time in allowed exemptions, so you're talking about the sub-haul, that's just people can self-exempt themselves?
That's a great question, thank you. Originally, in the ordinance, it was required that everybody have curbside collection services. That's when recycling was new, the industry was at a real steep curve of change, and we wanted high recycling rates, and we didn't want illegal dumping and that kind of thing. So the estimates were based on everybody paying that $8.50 per ton because everybody participated in curbside. But what was unanticipated was the challenge of enforcing that requirement. It took a lot of political will and administrative resource to, you know, to enforce that. If someone was not participating, you know, that meant $500 civil penalties, right? That meant sending them to collections because they weren't paying the hauler for a service that they weren't using but they should have been paying for. And so what happened was, the enforcement never occurred. The idea was that if you applied for an exemption, and you had one, you would give it to your hauler. And then the hauler would say, "Okay, we won't invoice them," or stop at their house to pick up their garbage, okay? But it never got to the point where the haulers took those exemptions and implemented that. They never invoiced anyone for curbside that, you know, that didn't have it. And then the county never went in and issued civil penalties. And so, over time, then, in the beginning, every people, a lot of people were applying for the exemptions, and I went through the records, and it was quite...
I was one of the first, I don't know.
It was quite a process for everybody.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Versus...it was. Versus now, you know, we took over...health took over solid waste division from Public Works two years ago, and I've had three applications for exemptions only. So, you know, it's something that, over time, their end result has been, though, you know, a leveling out of mandatory versus self-haul, right? So people now are doing what they want, and it's okay because when, you know, they're able...they have opportunity to recycle for free. And they do save money. It costs money to have someone pick your garbage up for you. But we still think that they should pay their fair share of, you know, taking care of our old landfills. It cost us $75,000 this year at Cedarville just to renew our MPDES permit.
Mr. Mann?
Can you tell us, has this been through any other levels of review and approval, like the SWAC and so on?
Both SWAC and SWEAC have been fully involved and have recommended the draft amendment as written.
SWAC...who's SWEAC?
Uh, thank you.
No, that's SWEAC.
SWAC?
We're...SWAC is a bunch of...I know, SWAC, SWAC, that's the executive committee, is SWEAC.
Solid Waste Executive Committee and then the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Which one is the mayor's?
SWEAC.
Executive.
Okay, so the...all the mayors recommended approval, and the SWAC recommended approval?
We worked with SWAC first, as the industry representatives and the citizens, actually, and our resources, right, the special interest groups. Everyone's, you know, works together at the technical level. And then we moved it forward to the Solid Waste Executive Committee, who, by interlocal agreement, by law, every year have to approve budget or policy changes like this and move them...they have to actually recommend and approve moving it forward to council, who is the governing body of our disposal district by ordinance. So that was a year process.
And they all approved it?
They all approved it, and all of these minutes and agendas have been online.
Okay. Oh, I read them.
Thank you, good.
Ms. Brenner, then Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I think I could make this a lot simpler. I thought I was always paying that excise tax. I just assumed I was. You know, there are programs that we all need in the county. I brought stuff to the toxing, that place for toxics, and, you know, I just felt like that was my right, and every...a lot of people do it, too. I had no idea that they weren't counting that in part of the charge at the transfer station. And what really gets me is, because I generally don't support taxes, but the tax is already there, it's just not equitable. Some people in the county are paying for all the rest of us, and that just seems so unfair. And if people have a problem with it, adding that, they can make less garbage and way more recyclables. Recyclables are not taxed.
Can I say, we haven't had our public hearing yet, so you might not...
Oh!
...want to be commenting, just asking questions.
Sorry. Well, I just...I'm sorry, you did probably a great...
Hopefully, we're gonna get to that tonight.
I know. I think you probably did a great job, but it was kind of...
Well, thank you.
...for me, when I was listening, because it's sort of simple.
Councilwoman Brenner was worried we were gonna take away your ability to self-haul, which we...
Okay, we're gonna do one more question before we do the hearing. Mr. Brown?
Two questions. One is...
You can only do one.
Let me bifurcate the question.
No, that's too...
First half of the question is, is this a one-year program or permanent?
This amendment to this ordinance would be permanent. The follow-up to it, as I said, is that annually, the Solid Waste Executive Committee is supposed to review funding mechanisms and levels. And it is open to us to go from $8.50 down to $8 if we want, if we're comfortable with our services and our funding levels. That can easily, without amending an ordinance, change because the language says, "Shall not exceed $8.50 per ton." That has not...that $8.50 per ton is not...has been that way for 20 years. It has not increased one penny.
So the second thing I wanted to ask was, I have been an involuntary transfer station. In other words, I've had people dump stuff on my property. I've had people dump stuff on my property, but they were...I was fortunate enough or they were stupid enough to leave their name and address in the process, and we found out that they had paid a self...an unlicensed garbage hauler to take their garbage away. And what this guy was doing was charging them, I think, half of what the normal fee was, and then he was dumping it on farmland. So my question is, what do we...how much is this likely to increase the dumping of products? Dumping of stuff?
Thank you, and...
Illegal dumping.
Thank you, and I will respond. Please feel free to call us and file a complaint if that happens on your property. Every day, we're out there responding to illegal dumping scenarios like that. We don't feel that this will increase illegal dumping. If you are a self-hauler and you go to the transfer station and separate out your recyclables, if you have 100 pounds of garbage, that's 43 cents, and we don't think that that's a barrier to proper disposal. If you have 200 pounds of garbage, which is a lot, that would be 85 cents. And if you have a couch, well, you can't put that curbside anyway. So it's, you know, individually, it's a very small amount of money, and we're still allowing people to self-haul, which is cheaper than curbside services. That's our perspective on it.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. We will open the public hearing. We don't have anybody that has signed up, but we would welcome anyone that wants to come and talk to us about solid waste.
Hi, my name is Brooks Anderson, and I really didn't expect to speak about this, but I think it's really important. I appreciate the program about hauling away solid waste and the costs involved in it and all, but I think, just in a lot of other, you know, not just in our county, but in a lot of other areas, that we need to start refusing and reducing the amount of waste that we have. And the idea that we just continue to have these costs, it can't really be thrown away. We all know that. There's no...I mean, we're to the point where there's no place else to throw it away. So while I understand the solid waste department's, Jeff's continuation of this program about the cost of it and all, I would really, really appreciate if there is a concerted effort for our county program or all of the programs to look at how we can have people not dump everything into the waste cycle. This whole thing about recycling, and believe me, I've spent a lot of years looking at this, it's not true. We don't recycle but about 6% or 8% of all the stuff that goes into the waste stream, and it all ends up in landfills. So the idea that we're making, and we are, making some progress with recycling, it's really a lie. We...it is not recycled. And so how can we shift this emphasis from how much it costs us to have it all taken away? And I'm saying this...Jeff's my neighbor, so I'm kind of saying this at risk, in a way, but I really think the emphasis needs to be re...looked at again in terms of what we're doing and...
30 seconds, please.
...the money that we're spending on solid waste and how we can really address what's really at the crux of disposing of all of the stuff that we generate. So please, I don't know exactly how you would do this in this particular ordinance or this, you know, maybe it's not possible at this point in time.
Time.
But I think it is possible for you to really begin to consider the fact that it is not the way to reduce solid waste and the cost of that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to us on this subject? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and what's the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I don't like to be implied that I'm lying about something. I...we do mostly recycling. We've got a bunch of barrels, and they got paper, plastic, glass. The garbage one is what takes us so long to take it because it's so...I just hardly ever...I even dumpster dive in our own dumpsters, and actually, a staff member here caught me dumpster diving out there and took a picture. I just, you know, I don't think people should all be judged as, "Oh, it's a lie." I think some people don't do enough, and they'll pay for it if they don't. But I do think that there's all kinds of options people have that can keep their costs down, and they can do things a lot better. But it's up to people to take the... they can do things a lot better, but it's up to people to take the initiative, period. The thing that got me was, I'm using the same kind of services as everybody else, but I'm not paying for them, and, you know, other people are, and it, it just doesn't seem right. So, I think this is really an important thing to do.
Mr. Donovan?
I concur with Councilmember Brenner, and these are important programs that we should fund equitably. I have a question about the exhibit. There's parts that are, they look like underlined and highlighted, and I'm just assuming there's a regular text, or are these like posed changes in, on our page, four twenty-three, four twenty-four? That's just regular text, or were there some sort of strikeouts, we're not meant to be there?
Thank you. Those, I believe all of those are actually additions.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so we are approving those, basically, okay?
Those additions to the existing language.
Those are the changes, or?
That is correct, and what it does simply is add transfer stations-
Onto the list.
-to haulers. Haulers are already doing it, so now we're like saying, we'd like transfer stations to also do it. Except that when the haulers drop stuff off at a transfer station, they don't pay twice.
Or at Red's Farms.
And we don't, and it's also in there that we don't tax the recyclables. And if you'd like, I could respond to that one public comment that we had on waste reduction.
I don't care. Does anyone else want to respond?
I thought, great, Brooks, thank you. We're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on three waste reduction and recycling, community education, and outreach programs for youth, adult, and commercial target populations, and so we agree that, you know, waste reduction is very important, more important than recycling even. So, our sustainable schools program is, we're out there in the classrooms with the kids, doing all sorts of things, teaching them about waste reduction and recycling. We're out there in, you know, and we added, just this year, it used to be just kindergartens, now we're doing middle school and high school and organ, school organizations, and, you know, WSU, Master Composter Recycling, folks are out there teaching adults about this stuff, and then we've got Sustainable Connections, you know, visiting businesses and doing technical waste audits, and, you know, helping them reduce what they generate. Those are the programs that we want to continue to fund.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I just, he talked about reduce and recycle, recycling. There's also another one that's important, and that's reuse. I reuse all kinds of stuff, and I think it's great. I'm glad I do it. Now, I'm not doing it for brownie points, I just, I'm cheap.
Mr. Donovan?
Okay, this is following up on my, okay, so then, the new, so the new language has excluding moderate-risk wastes and recyclable materials, what are moderate-risk wastes, and were they covered before?
I appreciate these questions.
Getting too into the weeds here, but-
Moderate-risk waste is hazardous waste generated by households and small businesses. Okay, so, and moderate-risk wastes are a subset of solid waste, actually. So, when we talk about the disposal of toxics program, technically, it is a moderate-risk waste fixed facility. It collects waste chemicals from households and small businesses, and those waste chemicals, if they were generated, you know, by a larger or medium-sized business, would be called a hazardous waste. So, as far as the language, though, in the ordinance, we wanted to be clear that since moderate-risk wastes are a solid waste, like recyclables, we would not apply the tax to them. Little housekeeping is all that was. Good question.
So, we encourage people to recycle them and not get taxed?
Yes, oh, that's one of the incentives, actually, for recycling. Not only is there not a tipping fee associated with it, but there's not a tax associated with it.
Sorry to get bogged down in weeds.
That's great, thank you.
Mr. Mann?
I just want to thank Jeff for his work and the great programs that you have. I personally have used the disposal of toxics a number of times, and it's just an invaluable facility and operation, and it's the exact kind of thing we should be doing. Have a tax, small tax, where there's a direct nexus to a service that protects us all, and we all benefit from, so I appreciate Jeff bringing this forward, and I'm gonna support the motion. I think, actually, maybe I even made the motion. So, yes, I'm gonna support this, and I think it's a great idea. Oh, and I also appreciate the voluntary nature that we are maintaining. I think that's an important piece for folks who are self-haulers.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, could you please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sadoo?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Weimer excused. The next public hearing is an ordinance repealing Wacom County Code eight point one four, garbage pass-through fee in its entirety. Move approval?
I second it.
We gotta have a hearing first.
Move approval.
And I know you're gonna make this real short, aren't you, Jeff?
This is short, this is easy, thank you. I won't even have to open this up, actually. So, in eighty-seven, we came up with this ordinance and decided we have a pass-through fee to fund our solid waste services, and the surcharge that I referred to earlier is a pass-through fee. However, in ninety-seven, during the solid waste legal arbitration ruling that said that the surcharge was not legal, it was clear that, for the same reasons, the pass-through fee was not legal, and so that's why they did not consider that, and instead went to the excise tax. So, it's, it's not considered legal, it hasn't been used, it's not going to be used, and so as a housekeeping task, we're simply recommending that it be repealed in its entirety.
Okay, we will open the public hearing, and I have no one signed up for this hearing. Is there anyone that would like to talk about garbage pass-through fees? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and what's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sadoo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Weimer excused. Our last public hearing is an ordinance amending Wacom County Code Title Twenty zoning and the Wacom County Comprehensive Plan relating to cumulative impervious surface coverage standards. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary Davis, Wacom County Planning and Development Services. The, just a very brief reminder, because we've had a number of discussions at committee, and this ordinance has been introduced as of August eighth. The current code in Title Twenty zoning has standards for treating stormwater for, on individual project basis, based largely on the size of the project and the amount of impervious surface these, these projects would create. The proposed ordinance would have the effect of adding a cumulative threshold for impervious surface in the rural and residential rural zones. Above that threshold, you would be required to use the DOE Stormwater Manual. Right now, the, the way the ordinance is structured is there are uses that are high, medium, and low, and everything that's considered a high intensity use would require use of the Stormwater Manual. This threshold would say that any project that would bring for a particular lot, the total impervious surface above this threshold would be classified as a high-intensity use requiring use of the Stormwater Manual. And all the information is in the packet. The memos bringing us up to date are on page four thirty-two, four thirty-three of your packet, showing what's the latest proposal for the actual numbers on the, on the proposed threshold. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thanks, Gary. All right, we will open the public hearing. We have one person signed up, Lauren Vanderjat.
Hi, my name is Lauren Vanderjat, and I'm a lifelong resident of Wacom County, and I've been in the asphalt paving business for about twenty-five years. Worked in this, worked through this process with the Planning Commission and staff, starting back in January, every month through April with the Planning Commission, back here in June, July, and we put a lot of effort into it, and a lot of recommendations, a lot of working together with the Planning Commission, and it came away from the, the process with a good feeling. It, it renewed faith in government that they actually listened to us and listened to our input and, and responded very well. We collaboratively worked together with Gary and Ryan and the, and the Planning Commission. So, I want to speak in support of this proposed ordinance as it's written. A lot of time and effort went into getting us to where we're at, so it's, it, it still puts us into the DOE manual when we cross a certain threshold, but it gives us some flexibility to do things the way we've been doing them out, out in the rural areas up till now, and we've been able to infiltrate a lot of that water, and we've got a lot of sandy permeable soils, so I want to speak in support of it, and, and I think it's, it's written well, and it's, it's a good ordinance as it, as it is.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
You say in support of it. There's actually three proposals here, and, and let's see, there's option one, option two. First, option one-
No, 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 those are- That's going back to a couple of previous-
Yeah.
What about the hybrid? Isn't that, aren't we dealing with the hybrid still?
Yes, what we call the hybrid was what was discussed at the last committee meeting and was introduced, and that was the one that took the Planning Commission's recommendation and added that extra five percent above twenty acres, so that's the, that's the one option that's being proposed right now, and is, has been introduced.
So, the only one being proposed here, because I looked through this whole thing, and it looked like they were still, is the hybrid. It's not the Planning Commission one.
Right, we, we included a number of the older memos, just to give you a background on what the process has been up to this point, but the most recent two memos discuss this particular hybrid option, and that's the one that's being considered now.
Okay, we're still in the public hearing, so is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Brad Rader, a dairy farmer, Linden, Washington. Just want to express support for the process. I mean, it's been, we've had a number of meetings, a number of conversations about this. Learned a lot through that, so appreciated working with Gary and his team, and I think it was nice to see a lot of farmers turn out on Northwest Road there to discuss this, because I think we were heading in a different direction, and maybe we just didn't all understand the impact of it, but I think that we're on the same, same page in the hybrid, however we want to call it, what we've gone through and what we've come up with, it makes sense as the document, as, as Gary just mentioned. So, I appreciate the, the time that's been allowed, and I know there's a lot of farmers that are, feel better about it now than what it was before, so I support it.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak about impervious surfaces? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and turn it back to council.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Brenner?
I move to amend it to go with the Planning Commission's recommendation. I followed that very closely, and wasn't like I really loved every part of it, but it was a very diverse and well-rounded process, and it really bothers me to have this, after, after all the work that the Planning Commission did, have this be hybrided into another, another, another amount, which is more restrictive, because I felt like this was very restrictive, and to me, that's restrictive enough.
Can you, can, can you clarify exactly what Planning Commission version versus what is being proposed now?
The Planning Commission ver- version is the, had the highest, what do you call it, allowed for the highest amount. I think it was like thirty-five percent for-
Planning Commission recommendation was thirty-five percent up to a cap or a ceiling threshold of about forty-five thousand. The hybrid proposal that is being discussed now is exactly the same as the Planning Commission, except after twenty acres, it actually allows more impervious surface, so it's less restrictive.
It's less restrictive.
Actually, the one, it had it in here, and I read it, about that if, people who have, the ones in all those, what do you call it, in all the different watersheds, that when I looked at the Planning Commission one, it showed a certain amount of, that they were allowed, that didn't have to go into that stormwater thing, but when I read the hybrid, it was less, they were allowed less till they got to that stormwater manual. I'll give you a perfect example. I remember the, the deer, no, Ten Mile Creek, it was something like, I want to say thirteen, fourteen thousand, and then with the hybrid, it went down to ten thousand. I can find it, I didn't think I'd have to. Okay, Planning Commission one, for example, Ten Mile.
Which, which page?
What? Okay, page four thirty-five, and it was, the Ten Mile one is up to, maximum up to thirteen point four six percent, but the, the, was this the hybrid? I think this is the hybrid one, yeah. Ten, wait a minute, no, this is-
It jumped to fourteen percent.
What?
It jumped to fourteen percent.
No, it was, wait a minute, no, 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 it was fourteen percent, or it was thirteen.
Right, the, on page four thirty-five, Ten Mile has a maximum theoretical impervious surface, again, everything, if theoretically, all the threshold area was added up, it would come out to about thirteen point four six in the R and RR zones within the Ten Mile watershed.
Okay.
And if you turn the page on four thirty-six, that same number goes up to fourteen point one five, a slight increase, which is what we would expect from that slight increase of the, of the five percent beyond twenty acres.
Keep convincing me. I had him just backwards.
Okay, so we're back to our original unamended motion. Do we have any further discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Mann?
I just wanted to make a compliment to Gary, especially because it turns out, we just heard tonight, he's leaving Wacom County here pretty soon, so thanks for all your great service over the years, but also, it's really rare to have people come and compliment the process. And both gentlemen who came up here and spoke may, may not have been in favor of the ordinance in the first place, but felt like they were heard, and that the staff was good to work with, and that the system worked. That's really great, and a credit to Gary and all of our staff, so just kudos to all of you. That's all I was gonna say, that's just a really important point to make, I think.
Mr. Sadoo?
I wanted to compliment the same thing that Mr. Vanderjat and Mr. Rader. A lot of times, people like the process, but they never come out and say it, we like the process. I think we, we are so used to hearing all the negative things, and once in a while, hearing that positive thing is, is very refreshing, and I think that is a template or process that if we, the citizens and your government are on the same side, and, and we, if we keep that in mind and work with that process in mind, things do work out better, and I appreciate you guys coming out and just to say a couple of words, it means a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
I actually will concur, and I, I really appreciate Mr. Vanderjat and everybody working with Gary, and I'm glad people have moved to, I guess, a consensus or agreement on this, and then I'm gonna throw cold water on it. I'm, I'm not gonna support it, as much as I'm- as I'm, no, I really appreciate the process. I'll be the one on the outside here, but I think the Supreme Court tossed us a pretty clear signal that we need to work on water quality, and we've been doing that, kind of nibbling around the edges. I think staff had a good proposal to start with. I think that's something that would probably survive. I'm not sure this one will. What studies we do have seem to say that the 10% threshold is important, and bumping up to 14 or 15% worries me. But, I'm really pleased that people were engaged with this and worked on the process, and they have the odd man out here on all that.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I don't know if anybody else did this. I didn't go to the here, to the meetings with the Planning Commission, but what was really helpful to me was the minutes. They were incredible, and I got to see who said what and what they were talking about. They were very detailed, and I thought that was extremely helpful. So, thank you to, was it, is it Becky? Who does the, she still does the minutes? Okay.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sot Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes five to one with Mr. Donovan opposed and Mr. Wymer excused. Let's move into our open session. Same rules apply. During the open session, you'll have up to three minutes, and you will be timed, and they will tell you when you have 30 seconds left. Please make sure to speak directly into the microphone, because our system is not the greatest, and we'll open the open session.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is John Westerfield. I am one of the thousands of people who have been negatively impacted by your moratorium on wells. I've attended a number of meetings on this subject. Each meeting I attend is larger than the one before. The frustration and anger of the people attending is greater than before. The resolve to do something about it is greater. Last night, I attended a meeting at the Roman Grage. Representative Bies was there. Our senator was there, Erickson, and they made their points very clear and their positions very clear. So, I stepped up and became a volunteer to be a part of the caucus, an active part of the caucus, of property rights and landowners and water rights concerned citizens. What our intent is to work within our group to recruit people with greater organizational skills and legal skills than what you've seen in the past, we're going to challenge your moratorium. We're going to do whatever we can to force Speaker of the House Chop to quit sitting on 5239 and let the process work as it is supposed to in a country where you're supposed to have representative government. Thank you very much.
Can I ask just one question?
Yeah.
Excuse me. I have one question. Did they have any idea about what the chances were that, through the legislature, something would happen?
It is my understanding from the conversations last night and conversations I've had elsewhere that there aren't enough votes to pass 5239. The big problem seems to be the Speaker of the House, who represents an affluent part of downtown Seattle and who doesn't give a rip what's going on in Waccaum County or anyplace else outside of Seattle, is sitting on it because he's afraid that it will pass.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eddie Yurey. I am the Clean Energy Program Manager at Resources for Sustainable Communities, and I'm here tonight to advocate in accordance with our mission to protect the health of people and ecosystems in this area. Glad to see that in your council packet tonight, there's an item for introduction to extend for an additional six months, the interim moratorium on permits for facilities whose purpose is to increase shipments of unrefined fossil fuels, excluding those processed or consumed at Cherry Point. Of course, this is well warranted, and it's well explained in the whereas section of the ordinance as to why it's necessary, given that Cherry Point has been a targeted route cited in government and industry reports for export of crude oil, tar sands, diluent bitumen from Canada, fracked gas from Canada, and coal. I want to draw your attention to some items and propose that you discuss amendments to the ordinance before approving introduction tonight, hoping that it still will be put on the agenda for next meeting in two weeks to be voted on by September 26th. I want to draw your attention to one project in particular of concern. The Island Gas Connector is a joint venture to export liquefied natural gas from Vancouver Island at two facilities and involves a component of a pipeline proposed to be constructed by the Williams Company to run from an existing pipeline network at Sumas through Waccaum County farmland, private property, the Nookzak River, and on through the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve underneath the Georgia Strait to Vancouver Island. Leaving aside all the, you know, many issues about this project increasing expansions of hydraulic fracturing in Canada, which is causing untold environmental damages and harms to public health, your focus, of course, is on this pipeline, given that the county does have very limited authority over pipelines. There are going to be county permits issued for it. And I brought one item for you to look at here. So, this is an authorization from Washington State Department of Natural Resources. It's an aquatic lands right of entry, and to save paper, I'm only giving you the last few pages of it. Of course, you can look up the report, which includes Exhibit A. Now, of course, this authorization was granted by DNR in May of this year. Waccaum County actually granted, authorized, the planning and development authorized a shoreline exemption permit in June of 2016, a couple of months before you imposed the interim moratorium. But, basically, this is authorization to conduct core sampling, drilling into the seafloor lead to test for the pipeline. And as you'll see in Exhibit A, there is an alternate proposed route that would route through Birch Bay, given that there may be challenges with going through the, given that the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve Management Plan explicitly forbids pipelines. For these reasons and others, there's other potential proposals of pipeline expansions outside of the Cherry Point UGA, I propose that language be added, that either specifically the line, if you turn to the packet in your moratorium, the moratorium ordinance... May I for 30 seconds?
You need to wrap it up in like 10 seconds.
10 seconds, okay. Cherry Point urban growth area, additionally cite the Birch Bay urban growth area or Waccaum County at large. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to us?
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Pam Brady on behalf of BP Cherry Point Refinery, and I'd like to comment on the resolution 2016-256B, the renewal of the Cherry Point Development Moratorium, which the council will introduce tonight. BP remains opposed to the ordinance, and we're concerned that the moratorium adversely affects our competitive position relative to our industry counterparts, and that will continue to be unfairly prevented from pursuing the same business opportunities that are available to others in the region. And this ultimately has a chilling effect on the economic development in Waccaum County and will ultimately deny residents the benefits of prosperity that are provided by increasing the number of long-term sustainable jobs in our community. This moratorium is in direct conflict with the public interest, and we continue to be dismayed by the misleading and inappropriate definition of unrefined fossil fuels in the proposed ordinance. We remain deeply concerned that the broad definition of unrefined fossil fuels is inclusive of other forms of energy and refined products that we manufacture at Cherry Point, and the public is not served by this inaccuracy. And we remain concerned about constitutional issues that we've raised before with respect to the Commerce Clause and the regulation of interstate trade, that Waccaum County does not have the authority to regulate trade from Cherry Point to other states or nations. And finally, to the extent that the moratorium is aimed at adding additional development restraints, there are already a number of regulatory requirements in effect that provide for sufficient public engagement. Absent a moratorium, construction of major projects would require submission of a major project permit, and the council would have an opportunity to approve or reject following public input. Such projects could also require a full environmental review and potentially state EFSEC approval, each of which has its own public comment process. So, BP Cherry Point Refinery is a committed, longtime member of this community, and we recognize the importance of our natural resources and the need to operate in a manner that helps ensure long-term sustainability. And the refinery has demonstrated a history of voluntary and proactive environmental stewardship, and we remain committed to working closely with our neighbors to provide sustainable living wage jobs. And we respectfully request the council reject the introduction of this moratorium tonight and restore the rights of companies and landowners in the Cherry Point UGA to pursue these permit applications under Waccaum County Code. Thank you.
Brooks Anderson. And first, I want to say thank you to all of the county council for doing what you're doing and putting up with all of us and everything that's going on in our county to do with water, BP, so many things. I just have been so affronted by seeing the advertisements from BP on the internet, on the New York Times website saying how, what a wonderful, wonderful company they are and all their things they're doing for Waccaum County and how important they are, some of which, in terms of them being important to Waccaum County, I believe is true, but I feel like there's really unprecedented bias about them going to the extent that they're going to convince everybody that they are right about removing the moratorium, about no more progress on the development at Cherry Point. Thank you for standing up and looking at what's really important in terms of our counties and, not only just our county, but really beyond our county nationally, for what is going to be our future about fossil fuels. And I know it's not been an easy thing, and you've taken a lot of criticism for it. It's got to be very hard for you to sustain what you're doing, but I want you to know there are a lot of us who really appreciate it, and we really do want you to know that we stand with you about holding strong about this moratorium and about the water issue. The water issue is someone, something that's been kicked down the road for at least two decades, and you have stopped kicking it down the road, which is so difficult, not only for you, but for all the people who have been caught in it. So, I have empathy for the people who...
30 seconds, please.
...want these wells, exempt wells, but if there's no water, there's no water. It's not something that you or Eric Hirst or the people who are suing decided. It's the law about senior water rights, so please stand as strong as you have. Thank you.
Patrick Hall, 4825, Alston Road, Birch Bay. I like being ignorant, because if I'm ignorant, I can learn something. Ran into a bit of information this last week, and I thought, how does this fit in? And it was sort of like, in terms of a pipeline, declaring eminent domain and for the public good. I, didn't make sense to me. I don't know if it makes any sense to any of you. I am pleased that, about the people settling the water issues. I'm really pleased that the farmers are finally getting together and talk about water rights. I don't know what the stream flow issues are. I don't know if the salmon really are affected by that, or was it just a law that got stuck in there? And again, the five acre lot, as I see it, is not a problem in terms of water. It is a problem in terms of being able to deliver services to people in the rural areas at reasonable cost. And I love to have that stuff looked at. So, there's a lot I don't know. If you can help me out, that's fine.
Anyone else like to speak to us during the open public session? Seeing no one, we will close the public session and move on to finance.
Mr. Chair, the Waccaum County Finance and Administrative Services Committee met today. We considered Items 1 through 6 on our consent agenda. These all received unanimous approval and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion for Items 1 through 6. Any discussion?
Just for those who don't know, these were discussed in committee. We're not just rushing through this stuff. We're not just rubber stamping it, right?
Okay, so, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero with Mr. Donovan out of the room and Mr. Wymer excused.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending the, sorry, ordinance establishing the Triage Center Expansion Fund and establishing a project-based budget for the Triage Center Expansion Project. This received unanimous approval and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Sot Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
He's out of the room.
Mr. Chair, the next item...
I have to announce the vote. I was catching up here. That passes five to zero with Mr. Donovan out of the room and Mr. Wymer excused. Go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending the Waccaum County Budget 10th Request in the amount of $197,253. This received unanimous approval and I so move with the amendment, including the blue version of this.
This is the version we're working off of?
Yep.
Discussion?
Sorry, I couldn't help it.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sot Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
And he is still out of the room. That passes five to zero with Mr. Donovan out of the room and Mr. Wymer excused.
Mr. Chair, the next item was request authorization with the county executive to enter into contract between Waccaum County and Kramer Fish Sciences to conduct a lower mainstem Nookzak River salmon habitat assessment in the amount of $225,238. In this case, the council is acting as the Waccaum County Pod Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This received unanimous approval and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero with Mr. Wymer excused and Mr. Donovan out of the room.
Mr. Chair, there was nothing else from finance.
Okay, Public Works Health and Safety.
Well, we had an ordinance that came before us establishing the speed limit on a portion of North Shore Road, and we made a recommendation to change it, and that's going to be brought back by Public Works. So, it was held.
It's held.
I guess, I don't think we called it held, but whatever it was, we did it, yeah. And then, next is a resolution authorizing preparation of a reassessment role for property within the boundaries of Waccaum County Road Improvement District 7. This was approved, the resolution was approved, and it will come back as a hearing before the council.
Okay.
And resolution authorizing preparation of a reassessment role for property within the boundaries of Waccaum County Road Improvement District 1.
You got to do the first, we got to, need a motion on... Need a motion on number five and then we'll vote, then we'll do number six.
We didn't, well, do we, we have to vote just to have them come back with something else?
Remember the vote was to establish the date for-
For a hearing.
For a hearing, so that's what we would be voting on.
Okay. Then I move that we support establishing a date for the hearing.
Aren't you approving this resolution?
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
Actually, we're approving the resolution in item five and item six.
Thank you.
Well, I gotta say, I, both of these are weird to me because there are people who live within those districts and I think they actually have elect, an elected board and staff wasn't sure if they did or not, so they were going to come back and tell us, so I don't understand why it's our job to even do this, but I move approval of the resolution.
Okay, and that came out of committee?
Yeah.
So that's already been seconded by virtue of that. Discussion on item number five. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero with Mr. Donovan out of the room and Mr. Wymer excused. Number six.
Resolution, oh, I move approval of the resolution authorizing a reassessment role for property within the boundaries of Wacom County Road Improvement District Number One.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero, Mr. Donovan out of the room and Mr. Wymer excused.
I noticed Mr. Donovan left for all the really controversial ones.
Oh, yeah, you missed some very important things.
Okay, we have an item with no committee assignment and that's nomination and appointment of one county council member to serve on the Wacom Transportation Authority Board of Directors Composition Review Committee per RCW 36.57A.055. Do we have any nominations?
Anybody but me.
Well, I serve on the board, but I don't know it's appropriate for me to be representative on that as well, but-
She said she can.
I don't mind doing it.
I nominate-
I want to.
I nominate Mr. Sidoo. And I second that.
There you go.
Oh, great, thank you, Sot Paul. I was gonna nominate Carl.
Oh, there's another opening.
I can take him back.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes, all opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Wymer excused.
And I nominate Carl Wymer as the ultimate.
No, we have another opening to appoint for the council elected official.
Yes, we do. Under executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, we have a request for council to appoint a county-elected official to serve with the county executive as Wacom County Representative on the Finance and Operations Advisory Board established by the jail facility finance and use agreement.
I nominate Councilmember Donovan.
I second.
Well, I see, if you look at the-
You had this surprised look on your face.
No, if you read the, we could actually nominate Michael Lillicust. It doesn't say it has to be somebody on R. It says elected official.
Oh.
That is a joke. I would, I would be happy to do it.
I nominate Carl, but he's not gonna be there.
So that motion has been seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Wymer excused. Next item is a request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Ryan McLaughlin and Kristen Murray to the Wacom County Marine Resources Committee.
I move to confirm.
Do we have a motion to confirm? Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Wymer excused. Another one from the executive, request confirmation of county executive's appointment of Chad Perrin to fill the District Four position on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
I move confirmation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Wymer excused. Request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Megann Offerty to the Wacom County Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
And?
And. Or is this an or?
No, it's and.
Oh, okay, we can have two. There was two vacancies.
Well, that was late one, but they can, when, both positions are open.
There is two vacancies?
Yeah.
The other applicant is Molly Pike.
I move confirmation of both.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Wymer excused. Now we're on to our introduction items. We have ten items on our introduction docket this evening. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
I would like to talk about one separately.
Me too.
Yeah, I wanna pull one.
What would you like to pull?
I would like to pull number 10 for discussion.
Oh, me too.
Probably for different points of discussion.
I'm very sure.
Number 10. And what one did you like to pull?
That's the same one.
Same one? Okay, so we, I would entertain a motion for introducing items one through nine.
I move to use it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Wymer absent, excused. Item 10.
Go ahead.
I move that we remove it.
I was gonna move to amend it.
Let's go one at a time.
Okay.
I move to remove.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I think I know where this is going.
Sure, then. Thank you for seconding it.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I really, I feel like there has been nobody reaching out to the industries and it's all been, you know, people say, oh, well, they're taking out ads and they're saying this and that, but somebody's gotta stick up for them and it just seems like they're easy to pick on. And I don't, I think this should have been done before we even did the first moratorium at all. They should have worked with special interests on both sides, especially the industries themselves, and that never happened.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of removing number 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that fails one to five with Ms. Brenner in favor. So Mr. Donovan, back to number 10 for-
Okay, so Mr. Yuri was bringing up a point that I'd been concerned about and I kinda touched on this in our last meeting. I'll pass this out and leave one for the clerk. We have in the whereas's of this ordinance on page 605, whereas existing and proposed pipeline facilities have increased or proposed to increase their capacity of crude, oil, bitumen, natural gas to Cherry Point. There is a proposal from the Island Gas Connector Project, which is Williams and, I don't know if it's a consortium. This is a company telling their shareholders that they are going to have a pipeline moving from Sumas, Washington to Birch Bay, Custer. And it doesn't say Cherry Point. It, I think we have another thing that was handed us that could potentially go through north or south or from Cherry Point or north of that. They're telling, and I guess this is fracked Canadian gas that is to controversial descent through British Columbia, so they want to send it through Wacom County to Vancouver Island to ship to Asia. I, I think the spirit of this ordinance is to try to give us some forewarning for when these sorts of things come. And I think if we just say Cherry Point and if this company is telling people Birch Bay slash Custer and they, then it might not be covered by this moratorium. And this is not a hypothetical thing, this is off of their website. This is, this is a real proposal. And if we want, so I guess what my, my ask is, you know, if we want the moratorium to apply to things like this, then just saying Cherry Point might not be adequate and somewhere, either we add another whereas or it's actually covered by existing whereas's and if we get to page 606, be it further ordained, fossil fuels not to be processed or consumed at Cherry Point slash, what are they saying, Birch Bay, Custer. But I'm open to ideas about how, I think the moratorium is trying to address these things that are targeting Wacom County and we are the elected officials who are gonna be asked, like, why did this happen or why were we not involved in the process? It's not a hypothetical, it's not trains derailing in Oregon, it's actually a proposal for here in Wacom County.
Could you wanna formulate that into some sort of-
Yeah, so as, I mean, my, my initial motion would be if we just go to page 606, be it further ordained, that, where it says not to be processed or consumed at Cherry Point slash Birch Bay, Custer. And that's, I'm looking for ideas about maybe how to do this best, but that's my initial thought.
Where did you say this came from?
This is a company called the Island Gas Connector. You can, you got your laptop there, just Google Island Gas Connector Project. And they are a proposed pipeline between Sumas, Washington, the Malhut Vancouver Island facility they're proposing to build, Island Gas Connector. I stapled the back of there. It came from the company that is telling their shareholders that this is what they're gonna do and the public in Canada because it's easier to sell it as going through Wacom County.
Can I ask a question?
One moment. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Brenner?
Actually, if you didn't put it slash Cherry Point with it, I would support it. I do not support our county being used and our, you know, not, not helping our economy or our industries in any way, so I don't care. But if you put it with slash Cherry Point, I'm not gonna support it.
Well, I'm looking for ideas on how to make it-
Then just do it, just do it as a separate whereas and we can vote, vote on it separate. It could say, whereas this-
Well, my, if it's just a whereas and the ordinance only applies to Cherry Point-
Or be it further ordained, or, but yeah, I could support that piece of it. I don't support Cherry Point part. So if you wanna do it separately as a whereas, or-
So you'd like a separate whereas just for this?
Either separate whereas, or actually probably a separate be it further ordained.
Okay, a separate be it further ordained.
Yeah, 'cause I don't mind that part of it. That seems weird, that it's gonna start there and end there.
I, I have a question, I think, for legal. When we identify things as the Cherry Point UGA, that's a thing, that's something that's specific?
Chapter two.
Custer, Birch Bay seems a little nebulous.
Yes, I think that's correct. I, I think you probably should define it a little better. And the other thing I'd point out is make sure if you're going to make those changes, I, looking at the title, needs to be changed. There are other places you might need to make a change.
How about this?
Go ahead.
How about just doing a separate ordinance and putting it on for next time? Is that gonna be, what's wrong with that? I, 'cause I agree with you on that, I just don't want it attached to Cherry Point.
You would support a separate ordinance on the-
Yeah, I would.
I mean, it's my worries, you know, looking, all, all you have to do is eminent domain your way north of the Cherry Point UGA into another, into the Birch Bay UGA and you got this thing going through.
I didn't know about this. Yeah, this is not any, it's not gonna do anything for our county.
I, I just, given that this was up now, I thought the cleaner trickery might be due as part of this ordinance.
I think it might be quick, but it's on the fly and I don't know how-
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna work.
-good it is. Yeah, that would be my concern. You got, Mr. Brown?
Ms. Frakes, when is this, what's the deadline for us renewing this? When is the current one?
Yeah, oh.
So I would like to suggest that we introduce this as it stands and if there's gonna be a reengineering of this, that we do it properly as a separate thing later on.
Well, I would, actually, I mean, this is good because we can't have these conversations outside of a public meeting. If there is, I, I think, I mean, this is a real thing and maybe that is a separate ordinance. If council wants to deal as a separate ordinance and go through that process, this just seemed to me like an opportunity where, yeah, maybe it's not as clean, but it's here, so. But I, yeah, I would be perfectly willing to propose essentially this kind of language applying to the next UGA, if that is something that we think would be-
Next UGA?
The Birch Bay UGA. Or, and that's more, you know, this is the, like, do we keep doing UGA after UGA after UGA or do we just say Wacom County? 'Cause they, you know, they have actually proposed different routes. This, this is what they've done with Department of Ecology. This is what they're putting on their website. I, I don't, I don't know if we, I just want this out publicly. Like, I don't, I don't know personally how to deal with this, but it's, it's, it's a, if we said Wacom County in the current ordinance, that might be a way to deal with these sorts of proposals, just leapfrogging over whatever UGAs that we specify.
Mr. Sidoo?
I think the intent with this new project is the same what we had with the previous moratorium. So if we deal with them, excuse me, under the same ordinance, that would be more appropriate. But I think that, like, if there is another project two weeks from now, now then we will have a project-specific ordinances. I think we are talking about Wacom County and it should be Wacom County jurisdiction. Before that, it was not clear to us and we used Cherry Point UGA as a jurisdiction. But I think our jurisdiction is whole of Wacom County and that's one suggestion. And another suggestion is for BP that they suggested that the definition of unrefined products or unrefined fossil fuels is inaccurate. I would request that if they can suggest what would be, what they think is the more accurate definition of unrefined fuels, that would be for us to look at it, that where the differences, where we are inaccurate about. So that would be very helpful.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to tack on to what Mr. Sidoo said. I've been very consistent from the beginning. I think the definition that we're using for unrefined fossil fuels is not in the best interests of the community and not in the best interests of those who are concerned about environmental issues because propane and methane replace dirtier fossil fuels. The, so from an environmental, when I wear my environmental hat, I don't think it's in our best interest to stop the use of those and force people to use other more dirty fuels, more damaging fuels. And the second part is that the, if you're refining fossil fuels, you refine them into different fractions, chemical fractions, and the stuff that you cannot sell, at the end of the day, you have to do something with it, you stop, you don't produce it, it's a fraction of the distillation process. When I was recently on my trip up north, I saw some small processing facilities in Alberta and BC to do with the processing of natural gas that was coming out and they were flaring off the fractions they couldn't use. So they're just sitting there, you just stand there and there's just a stack and they're just burning it, this massive flame coming, coming out of the top, dumping, you know, producing the carbon footprint, but not even generating any energy out of it, not generating electricity, not heating any products, not processing any products. It's just, it's the most wasteful use of a fossil fuel I can imagine, so that's my position.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, it seems to me the difference is if it's just about UGAs, they're all different. Cherry Point is an industrial, heavy industrial, urban growth area. Those others aren't. So it doesn't, I don't think they are the same.
Mr. Sidoo?
I think the point here is not, it is a UGA or what is the name of UGA. I think the point of the- the point of this whole moratorium from the start has been that we rather see these products processed here and keep our jobs here rather than exporting it. I mean, that's what does the process. It didn't mean that Cherry Point happens to be a name at that time and we put it out there. But I think the intention was not, oh, we're going to just have anybody in Cherry Point not to do this. The intention was that whatever our jurisdiction is, that we rather have more processing, more jobs, keep our jobs in our county rather than export those with the raw material. That's what the intention is. And that's what we are trying to do. So by, my point is that there could be another project tomorrow, another project two months from now, which is, has the same intention of using our county as a pass-through where we don't get no jobs, we don't get no benefits, but we get all the liability of any accident liability, of any spill liability, of everything. It does not help our county at all. So why should we take that risk? For, or our residents should take that risk. So that's the point.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, that would be great if we, if there wasn't already a moratorium and a proposed one on the places that can process it. That's the problem. I mean, if I took what you say, just exactly as you said it, we shouldn't have a moratorium on processing any amounts at Cherry Point. We should expand processing at Cherry Point. I think that's a better idea.
I don't think that, do you believe that this moratorium is a moratorium on production at Cherry Point? I don't think so. I think the, the, the moratorium is only to expand the facilities to export unrefined products, period. It has never said that if BP or any other company comes and wants to process more products here, that there is a moratorium on that. I don't think so. At, at least that's not what I understand.
And I would agree with you.
I would agree with you.
I don't, I don't agree because the definition, the so-called definition of unrefined is way broader than unrefined.
You know, there is so much misinformation being promulgated by a lot of different people, even about the $150,000 study and about moratorium, without actually reading through the document what it really means. And, and most of the public is single-line followers. They, they hear the headline and they believe everything in that headline is the whole truth. And, and this word moratorium is become so toxic that we really don't, a lot of people don't really understand what is underneath it. And that's what I'm trying to explain, that in this particular moratorium was only, I believe it's only to limit the expansion of facilities which will increase the export, not increase the processing.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I don't agree with you, and I don't think people are as stupid as you seem to think they are.
Sorry, don't use those words. That is really degrading to tell that people are stupid. I never use that.
You used...
I, no sir, no ma'am, I did not. That is not right for you to say that I'm, I'm saying something and you put words in my mouth.
You interrupted me.
Let's calm down and be civil and one person at a time.
I would like to finish what I was saying. To say that people only see one line and that's what they go with, I do think that is, if you want to talk about degrading, I think that's very degrading. And I don't agree. I read that whole thing very carefully. And it appears to me that it not only can, but does limit refined products as well as unrefined.
Mr. Brown?
So this is where I agree with both Mr. Sudu and Ms. Brenner, and where I also disagree with Mr. Sudu, Mr. Brenner, Ms. Brenner. I think to the degree that we are preventing a refiner from exporting all the refined fractions, which includes, you know, because methane and butane and propane can be, or are, if I understand correctly, fractions of the products that are produced in the process of any crude oil. They have to be able to sell all those fractions, otherwise they have to burn them for no good purpose. So I do want to make sure that when a barrel of crude oil is refined at Cherry Point by either of the refiners, that they are, they have an incentive to, and a market to sell all the fractions and not have to throw some of them away.
I like that.
Mr. Donovan?
I'm going to try to circle back here. So I guess what I'm hearing is, we can't do what I'm talking about in this ordinance. I can come back with a very simple ordinance, taking sections of this that maybe apply to this pipeline thing. But I want to respond to a couple of comments here. That I, I agree with a couple of people here that we have a messy definition of unrefined. And I heard from Ms. Brady that this, the phrase, if manufactured at Cherry Point, that, like, that's, I think, what we really care about. You know, is this product coming here and having value added to it or not? And, you know, this pipeline is not. Exporting stuff that just comes here on trains and gets put onto ships is not. So, I mean, I, I would support continuing this, this moratorium. But I think that's part of the, this study that people are making a lot of noise about is, you know, how do we, how do we get a really good definition of unrefined, when, what I think we mean is value-added here? I mean, our, we can't talk about exports. Our responsibility is, you know, I think protecting jobs here, the public health, safety, environment, the things that this increased traffic poses threats to. So I, I will, you know, not seeing support for amending this maybe, that's what I'm anticipating. But I would then propose, continue the interim ordinance. We work on, and then in the meantime, we maybe work on this phrase, value-added manufactured at Cherry Point, when we're talking about fuels and that what we're, you know, concerned about are the public health, environmental, and safety risks of, what's the word we used before that we did?
Transshipments.
I mean, we're, we're still struggling with this, and that, which is why these are temporary. But I'm just trying, you know, I'm bringing this up because, you know, these are real, this, this stuff isn't just imaginary, that, you know, these projects are out there. So if not getting any, like, warm hugs for my amendments, I would propose then that we just...
So are you, are you moving this as, as...
Unless I'm getting, you know, do I, do I got four votes for my proposed amendment here? I'm not, I'm not feeling that, so.
It's not that I don't like your idea.
There's a better way to do it.
Well, no, I'm just, I don't want to get in a situation where we violate some process or protocol or public notification, and then we have a gap in our...
No, this would be, there would be a gap. We would have to reintroduce it.
Which I don't want, I just don't want to have a gap.
Mr. Brown?
Just a matter of process. No, they're agreeing or disagreeing with what Mr. Donovan is saying, but there's nothing to stop us introducing this as it is now and renewing it, which is simply renewing what we already have, and then immediately introducing an amendment. And then voting on that.
I think that's what...
Right, there's, there's, we can do anything we want with this. It's an interim ordinance. We can do anything we want with this by superseding it with a different ordinance, following the right process.
With an amendment as a publicly notice.
Well, we could repeal and replace.
You can do anything you want. But one thing that you need to remember is that you adopted this interim ordinance to allow for the study that is spelled out in the plan that is specifically aimed at Cherry Point to come up with possibly a permanent solution. You, in order to maintain an interim ordinance, you have to be aiming towards something. You have to be studying a permanent solution. So this kind of throws a little bit of a loop into, into that. So just wanted to say that, and we can talk about it as you look at it closer.
So as per usual, once Ms. Frakes gets up here, I stand corrected. But I am also assuming that if we do that process, and that process leads us to come up with a different ordinance, there is nothing to stop us from proposing a different...
That's true, but the task that you've given to that attorney is to focus on Cherry Point.
My worry is to just move 10 feet north of Cherry Point and...
Why didn't we just say Waukam County?
Yes, I...
Mr. Sudu?
My suggestion to Mr. Donovan is, and, and to all of us is, is that we should come up with wording, we cannot make it project-specific or company-specific. Even Cherry Point was not company-specific. You know, it was a place where it happens to be two facilities there. And, and I think that it would be well-serving to the, to, to do that as what we are trying to achieve. And it doesn't matter, whatever route they take within the Waukam County, that's why I think, working with some wording where we talk about Waukam County rather than a specific area, that would be for future. Whatever it is now, we got to continue with that.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd also, if I go back to our earlier discussions, to my mind, this interim ordinance was proposed for a couple of primary reasons. One was the concern that subsequent to the 2015 repeal of the 40-year ban on the export of crude oil, that we would see refineries, and this wasn't, this wasn't just my concern, this was a concern felt by a significant number of workers in the refinery industry, that refineries would be converted to export terminals. And the, and the crude oil would be exported along with the jobs, which is clearly not in the economic interests of the county. And the second concern, as I recall, was that solid or liquid fossil, unrefined fossil fuels pose a significant hazard to a very fragile marine ecosystem. And the, so the natural gas pipeline, while I respect Mr. Donovan's concerns, it didn't meet the original criteria that triggered this interim ordinance. I'm not speaking for or against what you're saying. I'm just saying that that was the history of the interim ordinance we have in front of us.
Mr. Donovan?
Which the interim ordinance does say, whereas existing and proposed pipeline facilities have increased or proposed to increase their capacity to move crude oil, diluted bitumen, and natural gas to Cherry Point. So this is going to move natural gas a few feet north of Cherry Point. That's, exactly. So, but I'm just saying, it, it is consistent with the wherethes we had in, and I totally understand the process, that this is maybe not the best way to do it. But, and I, and I do, the primary reasons were the increased threat of rail, crude by rail, and the potential public health and safety issues of that. But we actually, you know, we did get pipelines and natural gas, and this gets where our definition of unrefined gets awkward because, but that's, you know, again, it's, it's product that is not getting value-added, and it's, it's consistent with the lifting of the export ban, and that these are not jobs, you know, that are, we're not adding value to this product if it's shipping out of a pipeline or if it's coming from a train and just going onto a ship. So it's, it, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's not a total stretch here to look at these wherethes and see that this, this island IGC project, or whatever it's called, is, is in the spirit of, and I understand that maybe there is procedurally a better way to deal with this, but, but I think it is consistent with some of the wherethes we had in the original ordinance.
Mr. Brown?
So, just for clarity, in this particular instance, I'm not speaking for or against what you're saying. Your proposal, I'm just saying from a procedural point, I think what you're proposing is enough of a deviation from this interim ordinance that it's problematic.
Yeah, I agree. I respect that. I'm not speaking for or against. I was engaging you and just agreeing.
Okay, guys.
So let's get a motion on the table that deals with this ordinance.
I think I had a motion. I don't know if it had a second. It had a second. It comes from my Brenner seconded it.
No, that was just...
That was my...
So I'll second to put this on.
We had a motion that I added some language you seconded, and I don't think that's going anywhere. So you probably just go with that.
That was my, yeah, that was the only...
So you're going to just pull that amendment motion?
Yeah, it'd be crooked to have it voted down, I guess.
Mr. Chair, I move to introduce this interim ordinance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to introduce the interim ordinance as is. Discussion? Okay, all of us in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that passes five to one, with Ms. Brenner opposed and Mr. Weimer excused. All right, committee reports, natural resources.
We had, getting back to my notes here, excuse me, microphone. We had a presentation from the Wildlife Advisory Committee, a two-year project on Waukam County ecosystem. And I think it was, it was a big ask about what the county should do in terms of protecting terrestrial habitat. We know a lot about shorelines and animals in the water, but we really don't have a lot of data on, onshore animal habitat. Not deer. We decided deer was not important in this thing. But, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big report. It's, it's pretty amazing. It was not, there were no policy decisions made. There will be, I think there was a consensus that we'd extend the Wildlife Advisory Committee and that they would take the 29, 35, whatever recommendations they had, and, and come to us with some more concrete proposals. But I encourage people to look at the report.
Okay. Finance, do you have any other things to report out?
I have nothing else to report on finance, but if I could just add to something Mr. Donovan just said. I think there was a concern that the Wildlife Advisory Report was going to be immediately incorporated into code and was going to change all the planning issues and so forth. And I just wanted to make sure people understood that it was an information piece at this point, a work in progress. Doesn't change anything.
No policy.
No policy. But nothing else from finance.
Okay, now other items from finance.
No other items from finance.
You had three presentations.
One of them must have been on Alzheimer's, I guess. We had, well, the other three, three presentations. One was the design-to-last findings, which was a report on the, what was required to do repairs to the existing jail. I would point out that the organization was very adamant that the, any repair work that would be done would not result in any additional capacity for mental health, substance abuse, counseling, or program space. And in particular, if one of the very needed changes was done, which was to put in smoke evacuation equipment, I think the price tag was four million bucks. That would probably result in about a 20% reduction, sorry, 10% reduction in, it was 15 to 20 beds, reduction in the capacity of the jail. So not only would we not have any additional programming, space for programs, and stuff, we would end up with actually less space. And I think this is an important issue, because the jail was designed in 1970, it was built in 1983. And any repair work is simply going to give us a 1970s design with a new coat of paint. The next item up was, we had a quarterly finance report from the finance department. The good news is we're, we've taken in more revenue than we've spent. It's like running a good household budget. The bad news is we have a significant amount of deferred capital expense to do maintenance on things like this building and so other stuff. I think it was a relatively small number, wasn't it? 200 million? I use the small number as a joke. And then the third part was, we had a semi-annual report from the Waukam County Human Resources Department, talking about issues related to employment base in the county. They said the one, everything's based... They said the one, everything's basically the same with one significant difference, different trend, which is historically more people who've left because they've wanted, they've wanted a different job as opposed to retiring, and now they've seen that flip the other way. The, the retirement is turning out to be the lightest single reason people are leaving. So, which is indicative of the aging workforce that the county employs, like many other organizations. Nothing else? Thank you.
Okay. Um, our first committee of the whole meeting this afternoon was a discussion with Public Works regarding potential property purchase for the Flood Control Zone District. And I think I would entertain a motion out of that discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. I move we authorize the County Executive Acting on behalf of the Wacom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors to move forward with and complete acquisition of the property as long as the purchase price of the property does not exceed the amount discussed in executive session.
We have a second to that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? That passes unanimously with six to zero with Mr. Wymer excused. Uh, Public Works, did you have something else?
Uh, yeah, we had a few things. We got a, um, a quarterly report from Public Works. Thank you, John Hutchings. He had to postpone it the last time. We also got a discussion regarding the, this behavioral health integration process, which is kind of weird, but you got three choices. We either do it all quick, you do it intermediate, or you wait until everybody else has gotten rid of all the chinks in the armor and, and do it then. Uh, we, we came to a conclusion, the three of us in committee, that probably the intermediate one is the best because we get quite a bit of money from the state if we do that. Then, the last thing was a discussion of a proposed resolution approving the Wacom County Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for the years of two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. And the resolution is scheduled for introduction this evening.
Thank you. Um, we had a second special committee of the whole meeting this afternoon and it was our continuing work on the critical areas ordinance. We finally resolved our definition of ongoing agriculture. That was a big win.
Long time coming.
Long time coming. Uh, we are at the point where we have about four or five items left and then we should wrap that up in the next, I won't say the next meeting because that's bad luck.
Yeah.
So, uh, but it was, it was a good session. A lot got done today.
Yeah.
So, uh, my, that goes off to you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Um, other items of business?
Nope.
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 Uh, I will throw this out there.
Business item?
No.
No.
Uh, I'm actually getting ahead of myself to report.
Oh, I was gonna say that I have two things to report. One was I had the opportunity to go and visit BP and I visited the new dock as well as their new rail facility. Very clean, very efficient. And I had the opportunity to have lunch with their leadership team and several people. I think we had a very open, candid discussion. And, uh, and I am looking forward to have more direct communication, uh, which I suggested that, that, you know, I personally, as one council member, would like to see that we have more direct communication and, uh, on the topics rather than coming through other people or, um... So, anyways, that was very positive. Please convey my thanks to everybody at BP. Uh, I thoroughly enjoyed my visit. And the second thing was that last week, uh, I am chair of the Arch of Healing and Reconciliation Committee, which is, uh, going to install a, a monument in the memory of the early immigrants in, in early nineteen hundreds for the Sikh or Punjabi immigrants from India, as well as the Chinese immigrant, as well as the Japanese internment. So, we have combined with, uh, with, uh, different communities. It is actually a memorial to honor all immigrants, not just these three communities. So, we had a groundbreaking ceremony on the Labor Day. We could have had a lot more people, but there were about two hundred fifty people. There could have been more, a lot more people if it was not the Labor Day weekend. And, uh, I suggest that please go to the website, archofhealing.org. And Wacom Community Foundation is the fiscal agent and we have raised almost seventy-five thousand dollars for that project already. So, uh, that was another event during summer. Thank you.
Okay, we'll come back this way with council member update.
Uh, yeah, I kind of threw that out. Good break. Um, I filled in for council member man on the Incarceration Reduction and Prevention Task Force meeting. They put me in front of your name tag, but I, I just want to really, it, it's amazing. I've had little to do this. They've been going for two years. Um, and just to see the, the incremental successes that's going on with having people from the district courts, having people from probation, uh, having the sheriff, having people at the prosecutor's office there. It, it's, it's, it's really good to see that it's actually working. There's, there's a long way to go. The Verance Two Report final version is gonna be out pretty soon.
Yep.
Did some work with people on Lake Wacom over the break. Went to Chile to watch democracy work down there.
Oh.
Went to Chile?
Yeah, it was work, my other job. Yeah, it's been good.
I lived in Chile for a while.
We gotta talk.
Yeah, we do have to talk. I'm sure it's very different than when I was there.
Not the best air quality.
Yeah, but, um, I went on this incredible agricultural community tour and it was the most amazing thing I've, one of the most amazing things I've ever been on. First of all, there was a presentation by Hart Hodges from, um, from Western Washington University on the, um, what, what we're really getting, what revenues agriculture really does bring in directly and indirectly. We get these numbers and they're nowhere near what the indirect revenue that, that, um, that agriculture spawns. And it's just amazing. He, he did it as an addendum, so I don't have it yet, but, um, I've got the first part of the packet now, but it's way more than what the numbers we've been told are. And it ended up, uh, there's, one of the farmers has the most amazing robot milking cows. Cow, I mean, cow, not...
Wrong cows.
Yeah, right.
Cow robot?
Right, no. The robe, it's amazing. And these cows are so smart. They line up when they want to be milked. And by doing that, they're actually more productive than doing it the way people have been doing it. And it's, you gotta go see it. You just gotta, I mean, there's this machine that goes up and cleans them all off and then gets up on there and pulls the milk out and you see all this milk going on, and, yeah. And then, um, then cleans them off again. And then there's also afterwards, there's this thing they can go, it's a back-scratcher. They can go and scratch, get their back scratched. And his granddaughter was there and she was so cute. She went and got her hair, her hair scratched. It was really cute. This was an amazing event. Um, so, maybe next year, if they have it again, some more people can come to it. It was just, I was so impressed. Yeah.
Are they still playing the cows nightclub music? When I was there...
Oh, those cows, those cows were happy.
Loud, loud music could get in a nightclub and I thought, apparently the cows liked it, anyway.
Well, it's just amazing.
The, uh, I, just briefly, I, I tried to check off one of my bucket list items and go as far north as I could. I got, made it to the Northwest Territories. I'll just say that I made it, if you drew a line a thousand miles north of here, there were still fires. Just, in fact, I discovered one that no one else knew about. It's, it is so, it's become so dry up there that there was just, um, uh, fires, fires in the tundra in, in the middle of Northwest Territories. We went down, um, through Alberta, around Fort McMurray, Manitoba. Uh, large segments of that, the smoke was as bad as it was here at the same time. There's just, there's so much of the landscape on fire at the moment, or at least during the summertime. So, that's my report.
Uh, just want to reiterate what council member Donovan just brought up. The incarceration task force really is doing, uh, great work and with participation from a lot of excellent members of the government and the community. And our consultant's big report is due September twenty-fifth and they'll be kind of doing their last visit here on October twenty-third to present it, answer questions. So, hopefully, um, that will be of some use to us going forward.
Okay, well, that's the end of the agenda, so we are adjourned.